You're probably like, oh shit.
You know my grandparents?
No, really, it's gone.
I, I replied to the story that I have a high school meeting tomorrow. So if the, it's big. There's a shop over tonight at home, right?
I know.
Then all good.
Probably want to watch.
Perfect.
We can check in. I'll be there.
Yeah.
It's been a little while.
Yeah.
It's nine AM.
Okay.
Oh, it's nine AM.
Yeah, it's been a few.
Oh, it's eight.
I don't believe we're late now.
Um, yeah. Same time.
Hold on.
I'm here.
I'm here.
This morning.
And you're off?
I'm around.
Being hydrated.
Oh. Yeah. And then yes. And then yes. That's why I think this is a class in the same.
Yeah, we probably need to.
I hear a little hunk of, I hear because of the college.
Where would school in Ohio just.
I know.
Uh, overall.
You're in the lead.
Yeah.
Are you a good, good job?
Yeah.
Yeah, I go to school.
Maybe the run down.
Yeah. My job I bet.
Yeah, you'll be fine. It's, and then this thing are, there's something more about each other.
That's what Josh told me, so, um, what I'm gonna do is.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah. It's all a lot of power.
What change is happening?
I don't know what to say.
We did not do that. Um, and then the other.
Yeah, I already set up.
You were to have two roles tomorrow.
Whatever. Probably over will do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. A lot of.
What do you read in study?
Uh, politics and history.
Perfect.
Your snack pack.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, that's the way you take care of that.
Yeah.
So.
No.
Thirty. I'm sorry, we're a little late. Uh, it's five twenty-seven according to my, uh, computer. And I would like at this time to, um, um. Here we go. Where are we here? Uh, have the flag of, the, uh, open with the flag salute. I'd like to call in Mrs. Raymer. Do you need Raymer to lead us to the class?
Right hand over here. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the liberty of the nation under our own individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the liberty of the nation under our own individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, um, I believe before we get started now, we have a little bit of business that we would like to attend to. Dr. Brigetti, I believe you're going to introduce through the office to our new member of the school board.
Yes, I am. What an exciting evening. Um, Mr. Eli Raymer, would you please join me over by the podium?
One, two, Eli.
You're welcome. Mr. Raymer, if you will please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, U.I. Raymer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties about, when I, excuse me. And discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
One, two, three. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome, Eli. Anybody want to say a few words to our new member, our newest members of the school board?
Uh, no, no, well, plenty of time to chat.
I'd just like to say welcome to Eli, and it's really nice to have you here.
I will say, um, welcome, and when I took that oath, I almost passed out, so great job.
Well, Eli, I want to welcome you. We've had a chance to meet and, and I have a chance to see how you operate in the student body and so on, and I'm really welcoming you, and I think you're going to do a great job, so, welcome to the school board. Okay, I will need now a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Who seconded? I didn't, okay. Moved by Mr. Noah Margu, seconded by Mrs. Walker Schuman. Uh, I would like to get this, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Also, the board member gets to say aye now too, so, okay, good. All right, uh, report of closed session, Dr. Brigetti.
Thank you, President Marcus. The board has voted four to zero to, to the approval of the settlement with employee number four eight three five six nine.
Thank you.
And I apologize. Four eight three five six seven.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, it's now time for the public hearing period. I was, uh, the lady who was going to be coming to speak was not able to because of, we started so late. I apologize for that. She was ready, but she had to leave. And I am going to have Pam, uh, District Administrator's Secretary, read the, for me, please.
Okay, uh, this is titled School Net. I know you do not usually.
Answer our public comments, but I would appreciate feedback on this during this board meeting. Have you made a decision regarding mandatory face masks? I understand the CDC has not mandated face masks, even though LA County has. Doesn't the board and the superintendent have ability to follow CDC and not LA County? Have you read the numerous studies regarding face masks and the negative effects of children? Such as the new study from the Journal of the American Medical Association regarding the high levels of carbon dioxide on children after wearing masks? Please give us an update on mask mandate, and if you have already discussed school closure because of the Delta variant. And that's from Daphna Hollander.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Kreshauer. Okay, um, okay, we have a notice of a public hearing and intend to request a waiver. Uh, I believe that we will read the. I believe that we will read the, uh, notice and then open it for public comment. The public hearing on the intent to request a waiver is, uh, going to read as follows. Notice is hereby given that the governing board of the Beverly Hills Unified School District at the district's board meeting to be held at 5:00 PM on July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, will be seeking a waiver from the State Board of Education of the competitive bidding process set forth in Education Code Section one seven four six six et sequel for the potential lease of district's parking lot, uh, the district's parking lot property located next to the district's Beverly Vista Middle School property. The district's board invites public testimony regarding this matter. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting will be held virtually. Thus, anyone interested in providing testimony regarding the waiver can contact the district representative for further instruction regarding participa, participation. Mr. Roach, have you received any questions or comments?
President Marcus, members of the board, I did not receive any comments, but I did receive a request for clarification from our partners at BHEA. Their question was, to the board and to staff, is the intent to get rid of the parking lot at BVMS? And my response to them was that there is no intent to get rid of the parking lot. We are looking at options to expand the number of parking spaces for our staff at BVMS.
Thank you. Other than there are no other ones, the Board of Education has heard your comments, and we thank you very much for your.
... property at Beverly Vista Middle School, potential surplus property, and authorizing request for a waiver of the surplus property competitive bidding procedures of Ed Code Section one seven four six six et sec.
I'll second.
Thank you. The motion was read by Ms. Tristan Walker Schuman and seconded by Mr. Margot. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for the question. Mr. Raymer.
Aye.
Mr. Margot.
Yes.
Mrs. Wells.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman.
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus says a yes. Uh, we will note that one of the board members is not here this evening. Mrs. Stern is not here, so the vote will be, um, five and oh. Thank you very much. Okay.
Okay, I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve Resolution two zero two one, two zero two two dash zero zero three. Resolution of the Board of Education of Beverly Hills Unified School District accepting an additional report from the district's real property advisory committee pursuant to California Ed Code Section one seven three nine zero.
I'll second.
Who said, Mary, Mrs. Wells, that was you?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, okay, um, uh, any discussion?
Um, I would just say, I would just say, um, President Marcus, that, uh, for those that haven't read the report with the additional information, um, in the community, it's attached to this agenda, so to please read the report, um, and understand, uh, suggestions. They are suggestions that are being made by the committee. Um, it is stuff that the board takes under advisement, and nothing is being done or voted on at this time.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Call for the question. Mr. Raymer.
Yes.
Mr. Margot.
Yes.
Mrs. Wells.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman.
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus says a yes. If the vote passes, five and oh. Okay, now we have a public hearing. The public hearing of an AB-1200 is now open at five thirty-seven. AB, per AB-1200, the district is required to provide a time for the public comment on the AB-1200 and the approval of salary and health and welfare increases for BHEA, CTA, BHEA OTBS, BHEA IA, and CSEA confidential management and unrepresented employee groups for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Due to the COVID pandemic, this meeting will be held virtually. Thus, anyone interested in providing a public comment regarding the AB-1200 was asked to email Mr. Wade Roach. Mr. Roach, have you received any questions or comments?
President Marcus, members of the board, we did not receive any comments regarding the AB-1200 public hearing.
Thank you very much. Okay, that being the case, the public hearing is now closed at five thirty-eight, and I will call for a motion to, uh, is there need to be a motion on this one?
If we're supposed to vote on it, yes.
Do we need to vote on this?
So, I will move approval of salary and health and welfare increases for BHEA, CTA, BHEA OTBS, BHEA IA, CSEA confidential management, uh, confidential management and unrepresented employee groups for fiscal years twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Wells has seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for the question. Mr. Raymer.
Yes.
Mr. Margot.
Yes.
Mrs. Wells.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman.
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus is a yes, and that item passes, uh, okay, five and oh. Okay, we've come to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion? Are there anything that wants to be withheld?
Uh, no, I asked.
The master, Mrs. Wells, did you want to pull any?
No.
Mrs. Walker Schuman.
No.
Mr. Raymer.
No.
Okay, uh.
So I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wel, Walker Schuman, Mr. Margot, and Mrs. Walker Schuman. Okay, so I'll call for the question. Mr. Raymer.
Yes.
Mr. Sw, um, Margot.
Yes.
Mrs. Wells.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Moving right along, getting to the end of it right here, and I do believe now, Mr. Dr. Brighi, we are ready for your superintendent's report.
Great. Share my screen. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Um, I wanted to just start off by thanking BHF and our administration for a very successful summer school experience for our students. Um, it has taken a lot of work with our facilities and our protocols that we've been using, um, and, uh, we had more students that were enrolled in our programming than we have had in the recent past, so we're very excited about the programming that we offered. And I just want to, uh, give a heartfelt thanks to BHF for all the work that they've done to pull off our summer school. Couple of weeks ago, I introduced our new, uh, middle school principal at BVMS, Dr. Skon, and, uh, just giving you a little insight as she gets settled into her new position. Um, she has made an effort to head over to the high school where the BHF programming was happening and, and some of the sports, uh, activities, and as you can see, she has, uh, jumped into her role with, uh, both feet. Um, she, uh, is demonstrating here something, I was just so excited to be able to see this because, um, we really want to ensure that we are hiring engaged, uh, staff, whether, uh, any staff, uh, just be engaged. And so to have a leader that's disengaged and, uh, the, one of the first days on the job, uh, trying to meet students from BVMS that were, uh, involved in this programming, uh, and we're really grateful, uh, that she is off to a really good start, and, and, and thank her for, um, her approach to starting a new job. So I would like to make just a couple of updates, um, and as was mentioned in the public comment, uh, that I'll be able to answer through, uh, this information, uh, which, uh, is, is a continuing, um, update, uh, that we continuously get as we work throughout the summer with the LA County Department of Public Health. We're hearing from both the California Department of Public Health as well as the LA County Department of Public Health. And, uh, both organizations are remaining that the mask is mandatory for inside of all school settings in the state of California. And that is regardless of anyone's vaccination status, um, that this mask mandate as of right now is in place for the fall school year. Um, on Friday, uh, the state, uh, and also the local county, they are in sync, um, with, uh, their direction. They always put out separate, uh, directives, so we have the California Department of Public Health, and we were supposed to receive, this is something that you've heard me say over and over, uh, we were supposed to receive the LA County Department of Public Health, uh, order and update, uh, yesterday, and we have not received that information. But what we have been told is that, um, the, uh, local county is not going to be, um, uh, they're not going to be, and they may be stricter, but they won't be less restrictive. And that's pretty much what we have been, um, this is the same, uh, protocols, this is the same philosophy. But I will tell you, they've been in lockstep. Um, I believe that this alignment is what we'll see when the LA County Department of Public Health, uh, when they come out with their orders. Again, that was supposed to be received yesterday. We're expecting that any minute, but, uh, from all accounts, uh, we are hearing that, um, that they're in alignment with the state. With some recent developments, uh, LA County always has that, uh, restriction. If there, uh, is some data that becomes available to them, that they can make a decision that's, um, more restrictive, but, uh, as of today, we have not received that. So the mask mandate for inside settings in all California schools as of today is in place. So I hope that that, uh, answers the question. Um, we, our priority is following the LA County Department of Public Health. Those are the standards and protocols that we are held, uh, in order to open. Um, this is the organization that came out and did inspections to all of our schools. They are the first line, uh, for us for approval to remain open and to have students come into our schools. Um, our first day of school is going to be on the thirteenth, and so we're excited about welcoming people back. We are more than ready and excited to have everybody come back on the thirteenth. Just a little bit of an update, we had an ongoing conversation, um, with our board about, uh, branding and, um, our new facilities. And so, uh, bottom left-hand corner there, uh, we were, we had some discussion about, um, having, uh, three different sets of, um, of, of our branding. Uh, we had some information from the board, um, and some feedback. And so the picture on the right is what we believe was, uh, the direction, uh, from board members, um, about where to proceed, but I'm, uh, certainly open to, uh, any feedback. I think that, um, that we took into consideration some of the board feedback about, uh, balance and about, um, just the, the overall, uh, look, uh, on that side of the swim gym. So I'm certainly open to any feedback. I think it looks fantastic. I mean, I'm just so excited, uh, about getting that done. Um, we are a little bit delayed in getting that done, from what I'm hearing. And Ms. Starkins, you can, uh, update me if you, uh, have received any additional information, but I'm hearing possibly the end of September. Is a possible time where that will be finished, that part. The picture on the left, um, we have received, um, some information about, uh, the mural that is up in the swim gym. Um, and, um, I want to make something really clear that, um, you know, a lot of times we bring information to the board for some conversation and feedback. We don't have an opportunity on a daily basis to, uh, have discussions. Uh, and so, uh, sometimes we bring those things right here because we haven't had a chance to meet. So, um, you know, there has been a lot of discussion about the mural. Um, we believe that, uh, there is a lot to learn about the mural. Um, I want to be really clear that there are, have been no decisions at this point to tear anything down, um, or to cover it. Um, we've been looking at the overall mural. It has taken on, um, a lot of, uh, wear and tear over the years, um, due to the circulation of air that's in the swim gym, the chlorine, um, and things like that. So it's, uh, you know, it, it's definitely, uh, has some weathering to it, and, um, in no way have we ever, um, said that, you know, that we're, we're taking it down and we're removing it. So, um, it is still under investigation. I think that, um, it's important that we learn a little bit more about it, um, and that's what we continue to do. So just want to be really clear that no final decisions have been made, um, about, you know, the, the mural and taking it down or covering it up. We're exploring, uh, many of our options. And we have a lot of new facilities. We're looking to see what makes sense to be in a competition gym, um, and we will, uh, continue that exploration at this time. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Mr. Raymer, do you have any questions for the board discussion?
I don't think I have any questions. May I comment slightly?
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I received an email just the other day from an alumni who graduated in nineteen sixty-eight talking about how much that mural specifically meant to them and set them on their particular career path, and how they believed it was a true asset to the school and to the students. I'd also like to say, not just because of the sentimental value to this alumni or the possible impact it could have on students, but solely from a historical value standpoint. I believe that was, uh, artwork put up during the New Deal under FDR, which there is a lot of artwork that was put up, and it is, uh, a group that is slowly shrinking. So it may be a good idea to keep it and possibly conserve it, if possible, and, and maybe restore it within the, the bounds of keeping the original artwork there. I just like to bring that up as a possibility. I know no, uh, final decision has been made, so I am happy that you, uh, clarified that.
Yep, you bet.
Mr. Margot.
Thank you. Um, so just to be clear, Dr. Brighi, the picture on the right is not branding covering anything.
It is not.
It's the other side of the gym.
It is.
Okay.
It is the opposite side of what you see branded, so, no, I'm glad that, thank you for making that.
Not misinterpreted.
Yep.
Or assumed. Um, I, uh, heard about this when I got back from my, uh, Gulliver travels, and, uh, I would just like to say that I don't really need to talk about a painting right now. Um, I hope the board does not spend quality time together harboring on a painting. We have way more important issues that are facing us, uh, coming up, and I think this could be something that is left alone for the meantime until there might be the opportunity to then address it. But I think all of our times would be better served, um, focusing on the students and the educational success they're in, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Mrs. Wells.
Um, I would just like to say that, um, I, I agree with, um, with both, uh, Eli and Noah, but as well, I think, given the historic and cultural, uh, significance of the mural, that when the time comes to make a decision that we're very clear and we have a very considered conversation about it when that time comes, so that, uh, we are fully informed as well as the community.
I'll agree with my colleagues to my right. Um, the only thing I'd like to add is part of the conversation that started that was adding historical championship banners.
Mm-hmm.
To that wall that had been seen, I think, Mr. Ellis, in your presentation, you had said that that had been seen in a couple of other gyms, and it would be nice to represent those things. So I, I'd still like to explore on the other areas of that wall, how we can represent those, uh, those, that recognition. I think that's a good thing to explore. Um, and just to go back to the mask mandate for a moment, um, Ben Chida is the Chief Deputy Cabinet Secretary for Gavin Newsom. In the recent email that we've received, um, he was quoted saying, "We think that easily implemented and effective measures like masking are far better option than other harder to implement options. In terms of the cultural and political disputes that arise, part of what we are trying to do is absorb much of the impact as possible at the state level so that it's not a local fight." I think that quote really captures what it is that we're facing as a school board. It's not our decision. The state decides, LA County decides, and we comply. So I realize that this, you know, having been through the last year and a half with COVID, this is one of the issues that keeps coming up. I think it's really important for everyone to know, and I thank, uh, Daphna Hollander for asking. for asking that question and public comment. It's not a decision that we make. It's a decision that's made for us. And then the consideration really was to make sure that there was no stigma attached to determining which kids were vaccinated, which kids weren't, who's masked, who's not, and trying to mitigate the conflict that could occur in a school environment. So I just wanted to add that.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, I have not given much thought to the, to the east wall before I started to receive some emails. I didn't know that there was anything that was, that it would become such a controversy. I hadn't even thought about that. I, instead, when I started to think about the call that came in, something more important came to mind. And that was the fantastic work that was done to make this, this building look like it should have. And I think that we should zero in on what Ken Haas and his group did to make this look so fantastic. And I hope that when people go there and to swim, and I know that they have been swimming at night, I assume they have been, that this is just a real little feather in our cap to bring this up to such standards that the people can enjoy using it again. And it's, and it's in really great shape. The only thing that I can talk about is a little bit about the historical thing of the swim gym itself. We restored an item that was built in 19, opened in 1939. And I really feel that we need to consider that implication also, that this was done by the WPA in a way during the depression, the Great Depression. And I think that that, we need to take a little bit about the historical impact on it. How that will affect our decision on that mural, I don't know. I'm waiting to see what comes of discussion and what we are required to do. And I think that we need to start to think about some other things that are sort of important. But I just wanted to point out that I, I look at this picture of our swim gym and I just think, oh, man, this is a beautiful thing that we've just done. So for that, I, I don't take credit for it. I didn't put in any tiles, but I did. I do like the fact. I would have been willing to put one tile in just to say that I had a part of it. But that's beside the point. Okay, so any other things? No, any other comments, Dr. Berg? Mr. Raymer, you have a chance now to give us your student report.
Thank you very much, President Marcus. I will say there isn't much to report, given that it is summer. But I will say the head row of the ASB at the high school had a meeting just the other day to help set down some dates for events throughout the year, as well as get the ball rolling on Link Crew, which is our connection for incoming freshmen. We had about 65 students volunteer to be Link leaders this year, which is very exciting because it's great to see that people want to be involved in the transition from being an eighth grader to a ninth grader and also act as mentors to those new ninth graders. I imagine that's about all I have to report, other than that I am very excited to be here and thank you all for this opportunity.
Thank you. Okay. Put the glasses back on. Okay, I will now need an approval of a tentative agreement. Can I get a motion, please?
Sure, I'll make a motion for the approval of ratified tentative agreement by BHEA OTBS.
I'll second.
Who is that? Okay, thank you. Mr. Margot and Mrs. Walker Schuman. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I will call for the motion. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
And I will be a yes for a five and O vote. Okay. Approval of a ratified agreement by the Beverly Hills chapter. Do I have a motion to the next one?
Oh, you will move approval of the ratified tentative agreement by Beverly Hills Chapter Number 328, California School Employees Association, CSEA.
I'll second.
Mrs. Walker Schuman, motion seconded by Mrs. Wells. Any discussion, questions? None? Okay, I call for the question. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes. Thank you very much. Approval is five and O. Planning and facilities, can I get a motion for 13A?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve purchase technology-related computer accessories for students and staff from Erie Jones Educational Solutions.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells. Okay, Mr. Margot and then Mrs. Wells. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, I will call for the question. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes. Okay. Okay, item 13B.
I will move approval to purchase computer charging cables at Beverly Vista Middle School from Dell Technologies.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells. We have a first from Mrs. Walker Schuman and a second from Mrs. Wells. Any questions on the computer charging cables? Hearing none, I will call for the question. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Number 13C.
What about you, Mrs. Marcus?
Oh, I voted yes. Thank you.
I'll make a motion for the ratification of Amendment Number Five to the Consultant Services Agreement with RMA Group for Special Inspection and/or Testing Services at the high school buildings B1 and B2.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker Schuman. Mr. Margot made the motion. It's interesting, this is to special instruction. Any questions or comments on that? Anybody want to make any comments to clarify or anything for the community?
I could, would just like to clarify that this is not going to delay in any way buildings B1 and B2.
I think that this is a normal procedure that is done for testing after a building is finished. Mr. Margot, are you going to say something?
No.
No? Okay.
Maybe, Mr. Blake. No, Mr. Blake is here. Can you answer the question?
Okay, I'm sorry. Go.
What was the question? I'm sorry.
There was no question. It was just a matter of clarification.
Confirming.
That the Consultant Services Agreements with RMA for Special Inspection and/or Testing Services at Beverly Hills High School Buildings, Billy, B1 and B2.
I just wanted to confirm for the public that this does not delay in any way B1 and B2.
No, it does not. These were ongoing, what we call special inspections for either lab testing. And it's, it's closing out of the work. This doesn't have anything to do with completion of the project. These are catching up on cost for the special inspection firms.
Thank you.
This is done generally after all the phases, right, Mr. Blake?
When work is done during the construction phase, the administration, the final billing and the final accounting for those services usually comes in as much as 60 days after we do a notice of completion. This is not pro west construction. This is the district's contracts that the district holds with special inspections. And these will trickle on the cost, but has no impact on the project. We have, the DSA inspector has signed what we call a Form Six on B1, B2, certifying that the project has met code, all the codes required to occupy the space.
Thank you. Okay, call for the question. All those in my, Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. That makes five and O. Thank you very much, Mr. Blake. Okay, number 13D, do I have a motion?
I'll move a ratification of a proposal to purchase furniture from School Outfitters for the nurses' office at the Beverly Hills High School Building B2 by utilizing the Piggyback Contract from the San Bernardino Superintendent of Schools Contract Number 1920-1273.
And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells. Mrs. Walker Schuman made the motion, seconded by Mrs. Wells. Any comments or questions on this?
Yeah, I do have a quick question. Mr. Blake, for something like this, which is under FFNE, correct? For the building?
That's correct.
Is it, why is this not under, or none of the FFNE is under the contract, under Pro West? It's all done separately in this case?
The design is developed by DLR. And as we get towards opening, the design was done, gosh, almost six years ago. And so, but we're at the stage of final implementation. There's always some adjustments in spaces depending on current situations. And that was the situation here in nursing office.
So in the future, as more buildings come back online, the, these things, the FFNE are done with contracts directly with the district as opposed to with the contractor?
That's right. The purchase is done by the district and we use the Piggyback methodology. Our staff, in this case Kathleen Moore, coordinates the move and the final details with the site administrator for final selection and placement as, as the cohorts or the adjustments to student population base adjust to the final, final work. That's why it's not, we don't, many reasons why we don't put it under the general contractor or in this case, the leaseback contractor. It's direct, the district makes a direct purchase and the architect does the initial design to make sure we're within ed code requirements.
So for the overall budgeting in the bond program, since this doesn't fall under the GMPs, does it fall under soft costs or?
Yes.
It's a soft cost. Okay, all right, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
It's listed in the master plan as a separate line item.
Any other questions, Mrs. Wells? Mrs. Walker Schuman?
No.
No? Mr. Raymer, you have any questions? Okay, is hearing none, I will call for the question. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus is a yes. The vote is five and O. And I need a motion for item number 13E, please.
I'll make a motion for the ratification of the agreement with GMS Elevator Services to perform elevator decommissioning.
Sorry. To perform elevator decommissioning at Elrodale.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker Schuman. Okay, are there any questions or comments?
I do.
A question. Yes, Mr. Raymer, you have a question?
Okay. So on here, it's talking about the elevator decommissioning. And it says that they will assess the condition of elevator number 128 and properly decommission this unit. Is this assessment to assess the condition of it needing to be decommissioned? Is there a chance that it will not need to be decommissioned? Or is this simply to assess how to go about the decommissioning process? And it's already been determined that this elevator must be decommissioned?
Mr. Blake?
I have a question. In the beginning, the reason why normally I would have had the elevator concept to you a long time ago. But the original design was to put in all new elevators. And we knew the age of the elevators. We made a decision to look at, when we say decommission, what it really means is evaluating to not, to re, restore, is a better word, all of the elevators. The consequence of making that decision and bringing them back up into full warranty as opposed to tearing them out and putting new ones in. We made the decision that we would make, we would recondition the elevators and bring them to current standards. That cost savings was about $5.7 million.
Thank you, Mr. Raymer. You just took the words right out of mine. I was going to ask the exact same question. So, thank you. Thank you, Donna, Mr. Blake. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes. Okay. 13F, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion for the ratification of Deductive Change Order Number One to Resolution 2020-2021-008, Urgency Resolution to Upgrade, Repair and Abate Areas of the Swim Gym Performed by One Silver Surf, DBA Surf Pro West Coast.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Margot has made the motion, seconded by Mrs. Walker Schuman. Any comments or questions?
Just that we don't get to do a lot of deductive change orders, so I enjoy saying it. Sorry I jumped in on that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said, we don't get to do a lot of these deductive change orders, so I love saying it as much as possible.
I have a question on that. Except there's an additional cost on some of the things that we do save. So it goes from one hand to the other evidently.
Yes, it does.
Huh? Ms. Noah, Ms. Raymer, you have a question? Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Wells.
I have a question, although I apologize, I didn't put this in questions prior. So you may not have an answer for this. But I saw that it was a deductive change order due to value engineering. So I'm curious where, how did you approach the work? Was it, was it just reduced from the scope of the work? Or is it going out to a different subcontractor? How, how did that come about? And you may not have that answer because it was Ken Haas, maybe?
I have pretty good knowledge, but do you know Wade Yu and Ken had orchestrated that? But I think the overall answer is if we look at the resolution, the resolution was an urgency resolution at the time when it was put together for the work in the swim gym. And some of the scopes were, I wouldn't say bid because we didn't bid out there. Part of the urgency resolution is that it wasn't put out the bid. And we used Surf Pro as the highest, best quality contractor. And when they put their prices together, it was based on square footages and assumptions. It wasn't reduced, reduction scope. It was funds estimated for the scope of the work. And this is the final result.
Now that the pool is open, is this sort of after the fact right now, Dr., Mr. Blake?
I think it was Ken's, frankly, Ken's brilliance in making sure with Surf Pro, who he has a long history with, made sure that we had the costs covered. And if there was any cost savings, that would come back to the district as a deductive change order. It was a brilliant move.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes. Okay. 13G.
I will move ratification of change order number two to Resolution Number 2020-2021-008, Urgency Resolution to Upgrade, Repair and Abate Areas of the Swim Gym Performed by One Silver Surf, Inc., DBA Surf Pro West Coast.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells. Mrs. Walker Schuman and then Mrs. Wells seconded the motion. Any discussion on this? Mr. Raymer, any? Mr. Margot? Mrs. Wells? And Mrs. Walker Schuman, any comments?
Yep.
It just says, I have a question, to upgrade, repair and abate areas of the swim gym. It doesn't, specifically, I'm trying to read this, again, we're talking about wheels and wheel housing, is that correct? The, the repairs?
Yes, it was the mechanical systems for operating the floor. So mechanically could bring, be brought up to operable standards.
Okay, thank you. More for informational. Okay, any other comments or questions? Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, and that makes a five and O. Okay. 13H.
I'll move Acceptance as Complete, Resolution Number 2020-2021-008, Urgency Resolution to Upgrade, Repair and Abate Areas of the Swim Gym Performed by One Silver Surf, Inc., DBA Surf Pro West Coast and Authorization to File a Notice of Completion and Release Retention.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Margot. Motion was made by Mrs. Walker Schuman. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Okay, motion pa, I'm a yes, and the motion passes five and O. Approval, okay, now motion for 13I.
I'll make a motion for approval of Amendment Number Five to the Lease-Lease Back Agreement for Elrodale Campus Seismic Retrofit and Modernization Project with Pro West Contractors. I'll make a motion for approval of amendment number five to the lease leaseback agreement for El Rodeo campus seismic retrofit and modernization project with Pro West contractors.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells' motion, seconded by Mrs. Walker Schuman. Any questions or comments? Mr. Raymer, do you have any questions?
Uh, yes. Um, it brings me a lot of joy to see this project moving along. I was a graduate of El Rodeo. So I'm very excited to see where this project is going. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Comment, question?
Yeah, I do. Uh, Mr. Blake, um, how, what, is there a phase seven on this? We still have one more, or is this the final phase?
No, it's not the final. Uh, we intended to, for it to be the final, but the reason why we brought the windows and the elevator to you tonight is to keep the schedule. They're extremely long lead items, and we expect to bring the final into you by the end of August.
And the final is, the final is a site work on this, right?
Is the site work and the plaster and the restoration of the exterior stone, uh, theater seating and, um, casework.
Okay, thank you.
How many phases do you think there will be then? Another one, six or seven?
Uh, there'll be one more.
Seven. This is six.
Okay, I thought I remembered hearing the last time that there was, that we were going to get one today, that this would be the last one. But evidently I didn't hear correctly.
That was our intention. The market, we bid out, uh, a number of times, um, for the exterior plaster and the restoration of the stone. Uh, we had some, not issues, but clarity on what the scope of that work is. We wanted to be sure we had the best price, uh, complete the work. We ended up simply taking photographs of every inch of the exterior of the building and put that into bid documents. We didn't have architectural drawings with that much detail. So it's taken longer to get that back from the market for final pricing. The rest of them, we have pricing. The window issue, in this particular question that's in front of you, is the windows that were originally designed as a historical feature. It was about twelve million for the exterior windows. Through lots of work and efforts on both the architect and the contractor, we've reduced, reduced that cost in half. So between the elevators and the, um, elevator purchase, uh, fi, final purchase and the elevators and the windows that's in front of you. It's about close to twelve million dollars. So we wanted to, um, go ahead and improve this, get the contractors in line and get this, um, into production, shop drawings in production.
Mr. Blake, I just wanted to, um, I mean, from what you're saying, it sounds like we are tracking on budget and, and on schedule at this point in time. And I just wanted to, um, confirm that for everybody.
I'm sorry.
Based on what, based on what you're saying, it sounds like we are on, we are on budget and, and tracking on schedule. And I just wanted to confirm that for everybody.
Yes, I, I believe we're, we're on budget and, um, schedule is the final negotiations with, um, that I'll be having with Pro West in the next few weeks. I'm, I'm comfortable that we'll end up where we need to be on schedule and budget.
Thank you.
As I recall, uh, Mr. Blake, when we decided to take El Rodeo offline, to do the work without students there. Uh, I, maybe I'm wrong, maybe you can refresh my memory, but I thought that at that time, because we were going to save a lot of money. I think it was in the neighborhood of around sixteen million dollars. But it was also that it would speed up the bill, uh, the process of completing the building. And I was under the impression that it would have been, or I thought that's what I heard, it would take about two and a half years. And now I'm seeing that it's taking longer. Am I mistaken? Or am, as was, is it taking longer for any reason? Or is that, was that the original? I was under the impression it would have been two and a half years.
Well, I think what our plan is, and has been for some time, because, uh, it's been a while since that, uh, the initial observations and strategies were put together. The drawings were still at DSA. And so what we intend to do before we bring the final GMAX to you, that, the final one, uh, we'll do a study session. And like we did on B three before, and bring, walk you through each of those stages. So it's very clear and on schedule, budget, drawings, the whole story. So we'll do that in the month of August. It's a matter of being able to schedule which day in August would be best for a study session on El Rodeo.
You're talking about the coming August, correct?
I'm sorry.
This coming August?
Yes.
Uh, any other questions or comments?
Well, I will only comment on, um, that this, I think people miss sometimes the amount of money it takes to restore things in a historic, uh, with historic consideration. I mean, this project in total, correct me if I'm wrong, Don, it's, it's over ten million dollars that is just in historic restorations, correct?
Yeah, well, actually, a little more than that, yes.
I mean, tens of millions of dollars for, for the whole thing, El Rodeo and, and the high school. And, and I would say probably Horace Mann in some regards too. So I just, I, I, I hope people hold on to that. Because a lot of people get upset when, when we talk about making changes or, you know, doing things. And we've actually taken a lot of care and spent a lot of money trying to make sure that we're preserving the historic nature of our buildings. So.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is also a yes. Thank you. Okay, we now have thirteen J.
I'll move approval of amendment number eight to the lease leaseback agreement for Beverly Hills High School modernization of buildings B one and B two.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion was made by Mrs. Walker Schuman and seconded by Mrs. Wells. Uh, any discussion or comments on this one? Mr. Raymer? None. Thank you, Mr. Margot?
No, I would just, um, kind of iterate that, um, eve, this is attached to B one and B two. But once again, this is not necessarily work on B one and B two. This is not delaying the opening of B one and B two. It's an amendment to continue site work around the, the campus and dealing with our, um, massive utilities relocation, um, throughout the entire, the grounds. So.
Do you, were you expecting?
No, I just wanted to clarify, so because it's attached to B one, B two, I don't want, I didn't want people to think we're doing more work on those buildings.
Right.
Okay, Mrs. Wells, any, no?
No.
Oh, Mrs. Walker. Okay, uh, hearing no comments, I will call for the question. Uh, Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes also, so we will move on. Thirteen K.
I'll make a motion for approval of proposal from DLR to complete campus wide survey of the Beverly Hills High School site.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, Mrs. Wells made the motion, Mrs. Walker Schuman seconded it. Any comments or questions? Anything? Can I ask a very good question? That a complete topographical survey of the campus is required. Is this after the construction or is this just now a, a general feeling of the whole campus for the high school? Is this done after the construction? Mr. Blake?
I'm sorry, I just, uh, I didn't rece, I'm having a connection problem for some reason.
Okay. The amendment, the, uh, the, uh, motion was to approve a, a complete campus wide survey of the Beverly Hills High School. And it talks about a topographical survey of the campuses required. And with the changes being made, is that going to be after all the changes and everything is done? Or are you going to do it before, before the, all the completion of the construction?
Uh, excellent question. This is, uh, what this is for is what we call a comprehensive civil site plan. It includes topography, of course, but also locations of, uh, we have twenty, uh, test wells throughout the site. So it's locating all of the property conditions. Initially, the civil plan, as I mentioned, uh, earlier today, was, uh, developed in five zones. It wasn't a complete, one complete property civil program. Because the design, design process, uh, strategy was to do only these five sections with work that was specific, B one, B two, B three, B four. And just the area around the buildings. We're in design now for the whole site, for the ball fields and for the re, the entirety of the site. So what this is for is to have a complete civil that is the base for the design for all the rest of the property. So this doesn't, doesn't, uh, this actually gives us the starting point for construction documents for the rest of the site. Meaning not B one, B two, not B three, B four, and not building C. The building portions are not interrupted or affected by the civil drawings. This is everything else around the buildings.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions regarding this? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus is a yes, and that passes. Okay, moving on. We have a, uh, uh, motion, I have to have a motion for fourteen A.
Okay, I'll make a motion to set the inter-district permit cap at zero for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year.
I'll second.
Okay, was that Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Margot, and then Mrs. Walker Schuman. Any comments or questions, uh, for this particular item?
I've got a question.
Yes, Mr. Raymer?
Would it be possible to get a definition for, like, what the, uh, the conditions would be to get a permit for environmental legacy and student services permits?
Mrs. Chisholm, can you address that question?
Okay. Good question, Mr. Raymer. Um, environmental, um, permits are basically permits for students who need to attend Beverly Hills Unified School District from different districts. We don't have inter-district permits, um, from district to district. But sometimes we allow students to come in, or we send students to other districts for safety reasons. Say a student is being bullied in their home district and they don't have another school that they can attend. Like, if, if we had a student here at Beverly Hills High School and we don't have another high school, we're able to send a student to another district to help them and vice versa. So that's environmental. Legacy permits are if your grandparents and your parents attended Beverly Hills High School schools. But now the parents have children, but they no longer live within the boundaries of Beverly Hills Unified School District. We allow them to, their, their children to be grandfathered in to attend Beverly Hills Unified School District. We don't have that on the books anymore, but we have a few students who are still, um, under that provision. And student services are typically our, our foster youth or students who have, um, protective orders. That, that either the, a parent or guardian can't know where they are. And so we have them listed under our department for safety.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
No, this is just a comment that I was going to make, if that's, anybody else? Mr. Margot? I was, of course, uh, asked on a couple of questions, a couple occasions, I'm sorry, about possibly reinstating the legacy, uh, policy to bring more students in as their numbers have dropped. And that's something that we might want to investigate in the future, I'm not sure. But that was something that I have mentioned, that had been mentioned by other parents or grandparents about bringing their children. Because the parents, the grandparents still live in the district, but the children don't. And they, so that has been something, and I think I've mentioned that.
President Marcus, uh, my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that they know, the county doesn't allow us to do that because it has to be done by a lottery if we're taking other students, correct? So there's no guarantee that those students would be the ones to get in.
To be selected, right.
You, you'd have to open it up to a, a, a countywide lottery.
For the whole county?
Yep.
Yes.
I did not know that.
And it includes surrounding di- districts, which is probably one of the.
But would, but if you mention that the grandparents still live in the district?
They don't.
Right, the, with the changes in the, in some of the rules around enrollment and attendance, there is a lottery, um, that is in, in effect. And if you open the district to students outside of the district, you have to participate in that lottery.
Right.
Okay, I, thank you.
Which would also.
Did you know that? I did not know that.
Yeah, which would also affect our basic aid, uh, possibly affect our basic aids.
Well, that I understand.
I think the rule changed in twenty twelve or twenty thirteen, around there. That's when they implemented that.
How were they able to do it in the past then? Because I know that, that the, the legacy that's left has been grant, you know, been left over, and it's the last one.
Because the, uh, updated process was, started around twenty eleven, two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. Before then, that, the lottery system wasn't in place.
Interesting. Thank you. Did not know that. Okay, um, thank you very much for that information, Mrs. Chisholm.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm going to call for the que, any other comments? Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes. Okay. I, we've arrived at the, this is a discussion item only. This was brought to the attention of, by Mr., by Dr. Brighi. Who would, maybe we can start the discussion then. Dr. Brighi?
Sure, thank you, President Marcus. The board has previously, uh, passed bylaws for, um, our facilities and construction committee. And at our very first meeting, there were some questions about, um, uh, the, the actual tasks and, um, the things that the committee will be, will be doing. And so, uh, it, during the meeting discussion, um, I mentioned to this committee that we would bring that back to the board to have an opportunity to, um, uh, better define what some of those outcomes are and some of those charges. Um, on behalf of the committee members who are, uh, just seeking a little bit of direction, uh, about how their services and volunteering their time is going to help benefit our school district. So, um, it's really a conversation for, um, our Board of Education to, um, help Mr. Roach and I, uh, put together, um, essentially, uh, um, you know, a list of things that, uh, that would be charges and outcomes, uh, expected outcomes for those serving on this committee.
Okay, I'll start this round with Mr. Raymer. Any comments?
Not at this moment.
Mr. Margot?
Thank you. Um, Dr. Brighi, I have the FCC guidelines up in front of me. Um, and, and in the third paragraph, it says that the committee reviews and makes recommendations to the Board of Education regarding current and planned construction projects and suggests measures to overcome potential budget shortfalls or constraints and improve the delivery of new and modernized facilities. Such recommendations are made to ensure the district is maximizing its resources optimally and is able to complete construction projects in a timely and fiscally responsible manner. So I think based on that, which are the, the basic tenet of the committee, and thinking that we just adopted the, um, seven eleven report tonight. Um, and we've had discussions now about a certain painting hanging in a certain facility. These are things that are all ripe for the picking for this committee to actually tackle, um, and start looking into. And, and also to look at, um, because I believe that the facility department has a representative at these meetings, correct? I don't know if it's Mr. Blake or Mrs. Johnson.
Yes, yes.
So that would be something else to, to bring up issues about, um, what is planned for the future of our construction with the bond program. And specifically, I like the idea of suggesting measures to o, overcome potential budget shortfalls. The oil wells really put a, a kink in our, in our, uh, bond measure budget, as everybody knows. And these are things that have to now be paid close attention to on, as we come toward approving the final, uh, GMPs for these projects. Are we going to have the money to complete them? And what are the plans for the future of the district, either based on the seven eleven committee's recommendations or based on stuff that this actual committee feels that they can inject into the conversation? So I think those alone are, are a good, uh, so a, a lot of meat to digest, we'll put it that way.
So, and no, and thank you for that comment. I, I think the one thing that I hear over and over, uh, when I'm attending these committee meetings, uh, is that people really want to, uh, feel like they're authentically contributing. is that people really want to feel like they're authentically contributing. And so oftentimes, over the years, people are asking for real work. And so things like, you know, reviewing the 7-11 work, even the mural, like, that, that is, you know, real work. And, and I know that committee members appreciate the opportunity to be able to, you know, feel like they're really participating.
Okay, that's my two cents, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Wells?
I agree with what Noah has to say. I also would add that, you know, it's a, it's a group of volunteers from the community that we've chosen based on their expertise and what they can bring to that facilities committee. And because of that, I would also look for their, to provide their opinion and to be able to be updated more regularly through the construction and facilities and construction group because they're more focused on what is happening with the current program and projects, as well as what is planned for the future, and so that they can provide their expertise and to, to the board, and as well as with regards to directing the facilities and construction committee along the way. So I think it's those projects, if you're asking for what specific projects they should be looking at now, I would say it would be what's going on with our existing program to, really just reiterating what Noah has said, that the existing programs, where we're at, what the next buyouts are, and as well as, you know, what we need for in the future. And I would add to that, you know, we include in that area other costs. There's other things that get budgeted in that area that are related. So if it's with legal services and how we integrate our security, our technology, it's, you know, it's looking at all of those areas and how they play into our facilities and construction and just providing their point of view if there's recommendations that they can make.
Thank you for that feedback. I think one of the things that, again, comes up consistently is, and, and one of my jobs as superintendent is to, you know, it's ensure that there's not this duplication of work, that, that, you know, we have other committees, and so that, you know, we're not looking at something or reviewing something that somebody else is at. And then it's also, Mr. Roach and I have the responsibility to make sure that, you know, we're also not doing staff work. So there's a, a little bit of a winding road, and so, you know, the feedback is very helpful. And so I think, you know, just kind of narrowing down and just what we want them to do without, you know, impacting some of the other work.
I mean, I would also add, I think it's, what's valuable is to have that point of view. I think Mr. Blake even mentioned himself, when he provides updates to the board, he can't go into the, the level of detail that he would go into in a board meeting, that he may go into with the facilities and construction committee. And I would expect that that, those conversations could happen there, and that then that provides the focus and, and then those recommendations to the board. And I think that's very beneficial for the board and for the district to have, is to have that, that layer there to provide those recommendations.
So I'm, I'm gonna disagree only slightly. I don't think those detailed presentations should be made to the committee. I think they should be made to the board in a study session. Those are open and, generally, and the facilities committee is certainly welcome to join and to formulate recommendations based on the information that's presented. But I think it actually would be a dereliction of duty for us to put onto them understanding and really having a comprehensive presentation of the facilities program and the changes and the status updates and all those things. I think that actually falls on us. I, I am a little bit concerned about crossover. I said this, you know, when we were adopting the guidelines for this committee. We have a lot of work to do in this district. It, it doesn't make sense to me to duplicate. So it's not the CBOC, it's not the board, and it's not staff. I think what they were asking for, in my viewpoint, having been sitting in on that meeting, was really clarity in specific projects. So I, I don't disagree with the idea of having, you know, an overview of all the different things going on. But my read on what they were asking for was specific things that they could focus on to make recommendations. And I think saying just the whole program is a bit too, too big. So the three things that I wrote down were working on the 7-11 recommendations. The mural restoration, absolutely, since this has become a hot-button topic. I think that's actually a perfect group, because they're a community group, to start having those discussions, just, you know, researching what the costs would be of even getting, you know, a conservator come in and talk about what the restoration would cost, what the different sources of funding, because that was my biggest concern, is that it's really inappropriate for that to come out of the general fund, and it's not in this bond. So the only two options from my perspective that are really, that really remain are fundraising privately or a new bond measure, which I'm not advocating, I don't think we need it. But I think that third thing that they could work on is starting to look at what additional projects would be in a bond measure down the road, obviously not 2022, but maybe '24, '26. What are the things that we would need to put into that that are not in Measure VH? So those are the three things that I thought would be really helpful, to have their universal knowledge and background, and really, or find specific things that they can work on and come back to us and report on without overstepping into board or staff work. That's all.
Okay, I would just like to clarify a couple things and then explain what I see that. And I agree with Mr. Margot that we worked for almost two meetings. We, we talked about the guidelines for the committee, and we approved them. And, and I think they're pretty explicit about what the jobs of a person who accepts an appointment on that committee would be. So I don't think there's any question about that. I would like to clarify that there are other existing committees, but those existing committees have different jobs. For example, the CBOC's job is to see that the money is spent according to the guidelines that were listed in the bond issue, and we usually get that report after a year. In other words, it's a year after. So I, I'd like to think that the members of this committee, the finance and, the facilities and construction committee, operate more on it at a time when it's there right now, not something that's been happening a year ago. And also, the 7-11 committee deals with surplus property, and, and then at that point, the facilities and construction committee can talk about the, the use of those properties going forward. I would like to say that I have never seen really a facilities and committee in all the last four or five years that I've seen at all, even though it's been listed in the, the board minutes. And I wondered what had happened to that, because I don't think we really had one. I think that it's important that the members of this committee be commu-, be very familiar with the, and review and become familiar with their master plan, and, and overs, not to oversee it in that respect, but to look at the projects and so on and see how they're going. I do believe that they can come up with ideas about the facilities and how they can be improved or if they need to be improved, and, and so on. I just think that, to say that, and I, I'm not sure that I agree with you, Mrs. Walker Schuman, that what the job is, because I sort of felt that it was pretty well spelled out in the guidelines that were made by us during those few meetings that we had that were passed several months ago. So I think that the facilities and construction committee is, is going to be helpful. It's like an extra set of eyes on what's going on. And I personally think that they will have their work cut out for it. I don't think it's an easy job. I think there's a lot that can be done, so.
So, President Marcus, just to, your point about whether there was a facility committee in the past. There was, in fact, I remember former Mayor Ed Brown served on it. It was a time when they were developing the plans. It was after the bond was passed, but before really construction had started. And they were instrumental in advising the board on their thoughts behind the projects that the district were considering at the time. They weighed in on a lot of the historical aspects of the different buildings. So it was, it existed at a time before we had all of these plans approved by DSA. So it was kind of a, it served a different capacity, in a different capacity than the current committee serves. But I think the current committee can do a lot of work in that direction. Also, something we didn't mention was, well, you kind of mentioned, it was building A at the high school. And that's something else the committee could talk about, is what to do with building A.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I think, and not just building A, but they need to talk about Hawthorne.
Well, I think that, do we have, we've come to some ideas of what this committee can do, and it's not a matter of waste of time and, and resources. I think that they can, and will do a efficient job once they get this direction now.
And certainly they'll let us know if they need more direction or more clarity. I think this wasn't, you know, this didn't come out of us saying we felt it was unclear. The committee members themselves felt it wasn't clear, so they wanted more specific guidance.
If you think that we've been able to give it to them now with this discussion, is what I'm saying.
I think so, and, and I look forward to updates on the mural and the 7-11 committee. Recommendations.
Okay. And no further discussion, okay? Let me just let you now have, before we go into the communication from the board members, I believe, Dr. Brighi, you wanted to correct something you said a few minutes earlier.
Yes, so I apologize, I should start wearing my glasses. I transposed one number for the employee number, so this is important. So I want to clarify the report from closed session, and that is the board has voted four to zero to approve the settlement with employee number 483569.
Thank you very much. Okay, time for our communications from the board members. Mr. Raymer, you get to go first.
I don't think I have any specific communication, but I would just like to reaffirm that I'm looking forward to the rest of my term and working with you all throughout it.
Thank you very much, and we're glad to have you with us. Mr. Margot?
Thank you. Eli, terrific job tonight, very insightful questions. I enjoy listening to them. I wanted to wish everybody who celebrates tomorrow a happy Bastille Day. Don't forget. A little reaching into history there. And Dr. Brighi, I think we have the most qualified middle school running back on the report.
I know, impressive.
It might be a ringer, but, you know, you'll see. And just for everybody to stay, be responsible and stay healthy and continue to help us get out of this pandemic and back to normal. This is wearing on all of us, so, and enjoy your summer.
I'd just like to say again, welcome to Eli, and congratulations on a great first board meeting. I think you did a wonderful job. Also, I'd like to, to welcome Dr. Skon, who I have not met yet, or had the pleasure of meeting just yet, but very, very much looking forward to meeting her, and very happy that she has joined your team and our team, so that's wonder, wonderful news. And the other thing I'd say is I, I really do appreciate the community reaching out about the mural. I know that that can be frustrating in some ways, that you get a lot of feedback all at once, but I actually really appreciate to hear from the community about things that, that are important and are important to the community. So I, I'd like to thank those people that did call attention to the mural and call attention to its importance, and I appreciate that, so thank you.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Just want to reiterate my welcome to Eli. And, you know, perhaps one of your first surveys that you can send out to the students asks about the value of the mural to them as it resonates with them, since it's been a building that is so popularly used by our students. I, I don't want to go too long, I'm only gonna say, I hope everyone enjoys the last bit of summer. We only have four or five weeks left before we're all back in school. I'm sorry, I don't want to be the buzzkill, but that's the reality, so take advantage of it. Be safe, enjoy, and, and we'll see you soon.
SPF fifty or above.
And wear, wear your masks, don't get COVID.
Well, it's unanimous, we all welcome you, Eli. You have a unanimous vote from the members of the board, and thank you for your being here tonight. You did wear the right color, I will tell you that. I'm very partial to blue. Keep that in mind. Also, I'd like to mention that today is July thirteenth, and August thirteenth is the first day of school. So it is a month away, and I know that the administration has a lot of work cut out for them between now and that date. And I know that they're gonna do a bang-up job of getting us ready for the start of the school year. And I just want to tell you that I spent a few days in the glorious state in the middle of Minnesota in Brainerd on Gull Lake. For those of you who don't know that, where that is, that was Paul Bunyan country, yeah, with his Babe the Ox. And my grandchildren wait every year to go to Minnesota. Not actually has it got 10,000 lakes, it's got 13,000 lakes, but they only say 10 because it's more easy to say. I mean, it's a little more. So I want to wish all of you to have a very pleasant remainder of the summer, and I look forward to seeing you all on July 27th, which is our next board meeting. And stay healthy, stay safe, and we'll see you all on the 27th. Thank you for your attendance tonight. It's 6:49, and the meeting is adjourned.
Good night, thank you.